Um, actually, you can take notes. And tell who's not going to be here.
Don't speak over me.
Any volunteers?
Um, I will take notes. Can I use the paper or whatever in the back?
Yeah.
I have a pad, too.
Oh, here, get it.
Jen, do you want me to give you? Oh, okay, I was gonna say you have that spirally stuff, but you can rip it without the spirally stuff, okay.
Yes, luckily. Okay.
So, we'll call the chief order at 6:05. Okay, Carrie, Michelle, and...
Um, we have Dennis, Michelle.
Yep, that's me.
And Candace.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we both have gray hair.
With Carrie.
And glasses.
Okay, so we have Doctor Green.
Okay. So, I did resend out the July minutes. I don't tell him that he never got them. We postponed them out, um, in August. He apologized, he had issues with her family and things just weren't done. Um, so did that mean, so are we sending them again today to tell him that he still has them?
Yes, I sent them, I made copies, too, for everyone here.
Okay. So, um, if you want, I guess I could read the August one. I mean, the July one.
Yeah.
We'll have the July one. Okay. Um, waiting on the post order at 6:15. Both attendants were Carrie, Michelle, Denise, Jen, Paula, Candace, and Kate. Not present were Candace, Anita, and Helen. All members of the meeting for the last meeting. Candace asked for an impression for the minutes. Denise made a motion to accept the minutes. And Carrie seconded that. Nominating committee, um, had not met yet. Um, Carrie did announce, um, for the committee. The nominations are Director Jen, Chairperson Candace Cook, and Vice Chair Paula Wood. Um, Michelle made a motion to accept the nominating committee nominating. And Kate seconded this. Jen discussed that the trustee account provided for the trustee said refused during the discussion. Leo will keep, uh, updated on all the accounts. Jen announced the meeting room. And in person programs will officially begin September 2021. The book group may start as early as August 2021. MCLC materials require the hours open requirement beginning September 7, 2021. Hours of operation in the library will increase to 31 hours weekly to 32.5 hours weekly. In September, the library will be open Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from 10:30 to 5:30 p.m. Thursdays from 10:30 to 7:00, and Saturdays from 10:30 to 1:30. Book and physical libraries can be opened with full staff. This will keep some working hours consistent while also allowing some evening hours for programs that can run from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. This will increase patron contacts tied in the multiple library allows with the current staff. As a result of the library being open, the maximum number of hours, the minimum goal for the future is to increase the hours of the youth service position. We increased staff hours and considered adding new staff. Although taken to accept the new hours, they made a motion to accept new hours to begin September 7, 2021, and Carrie seconded that. Jen updated the board about the landscaping, solar waterfall, breeding rocks, and bench trees and plants to begin in the fall. The review of the memorial for that program was... That memorial, um, program was discussed in July 2019 meeting. And then, and was decided at the meeting, the event of the loss of an immediate family member of a trustee of what will be purchased in the memory of the deceased person with their name on the inside cover. Candace distributed the new and updated trustee handouts to members. And asked that they were any questions, no one had any, no one answered questions. Paula asked about having volunteers back in the library. Jen updated the trustees that the board of health had given me approval to have volunteers return to the library. Warrants, $7,552 CW Mars Inc., $2,574.77 Baker Taylor Ingram Entertainment, Key Wick, Case LLC, $3,322.33 Baker and Taylor Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment, Old Sturbridge Inc., and Springfield Museum. $2,151.55 Cockpit Hill Baker and Taylor Gray House Publishing, Ingram Entertainment. This, this is LLC, I know I didn't say that right. The motion was through Ms. Paula, seconded by Michelle, to accept the sign of the warrant. There is an ongoing book sale at the library. Transcendence suddenly having a week-long book sale in October of 2021. Jen and the staff are very happy to have the library open again and open and operating well. The next meeting of the trustees will be August 10, 2021. The meeting ended at 6:29. Respectfully submitted Kate Mercer, substitute seconded. Okay. So, is there any corrections in that, other than me probably messing up a few words?
No, I don't think so.
The updated trustees', um, handouts, I wasn't there, so I never got them. Or is that something that I got earlier and I'm forgetting about?
Did I, did I decel with you?
Uh, the little trusty pocket guide?
I never got that.
Okay, I have extras, so I'll make sure I get you one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, were there any corrections in here? If not, someone needs to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the minutes are good, as read, accepted as read.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, so here is August minutes. Minutes for the public library Tuesday, August 7th, both women. All in favor of the July?
Aye.
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 Sorry about that. Um, minutes for the Brandy Free Public Library Tuesday, August 17, 2021. President was Director Jen, um, Michelle, Carrie, Helen. Denise and Paula absent with Kate, Candace, Candace, and Anita. Um, meeting began at 6:12, directors next. Masked crime will be discussed at the Board of Health meeting tonight. The library will follow suit with whatever the Board of Health does. Staff and volunteers, staff have been encouraged to consider mask wearing around the public places and spaces between under commoners, 75 patients per day. Patients' lives, the children's room are strongly urged to wear masks to protect our younger patrons. The person program, this person program will start September 7th. The community room will be hosting a book sale through the end of September, so all servers will continue outdoors as weather permits. The children's play will currently meet on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. and at 11:00 a.m. outdoors weather committee. The library has received five mobile hotspots from the adulting brand. They will be available for the tech house, so they'll be available for tech staff. Hotspot will be available from linear through June 30, 2022. Jen is currently working with other vendors to determine how they can be taken out and for how long and other special procedures. Jen is working with the areas report, which is due on August 27th, this year. The book group will be meeting September 9, 2021. Friends will be meeting September 6, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Fine elimination. Jen has told, uh, fine elimination to the Brandy Free Public Library. Their libraries have not charged by through the entire pandemic. The library goal is to provide access to its material equally, equally for everyone. Research indicates that fines are concurrent and many patrons tend to use their libraries less or not at all. The section following with the benefits tool allows them, for example, families are embarrassed to return the library due to the fines and they have occurred or subsequently lost the benefit of their younger patrons. Patrons will still be charged for replacing fees for a long overdue past 12 weeks. I know I didn't write. Patrons will be, will still be charged replacement fees for longer overdue past 12 weeks, damaged or missing items. CW Mars can charge the setting for our patrons to count moving forward. The section following regarding how to get patrons to return books for food drives, donations, blur for the Council of the Beaches, along offering a desk of raffles and encourage to return the books. A motion has been reached by us and seconded by Carrie. For Jen to write a letter to the select board notifying them that we would like to institute fine eliminations, all in favor. Warrants, $2,348.02 Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment, and so forth. Hold on one second, we just shut that off. Sorry, guys. Shut up. Nine dollars, 64 cents on the towel. $1,677.51 Baker and Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, and $1,444.16 Blackstone Publishing, Ingram Entertainment. Hoopla by Midwest Kate and the library store. Please made a motion to accept the warrant, as present, and seconded by Carrie, all in favor. Jen advised that the Hoopla, the very popular digital media service, will be offered by the library. This is being started with a $1,000 grant. The school is allowed our agents to borrow movies, music, audiobooks, ebooks, comics, and TV shows to enjoy on a computer tablet, phone, or TV. The next meeting is scheduled September 14th at 6:00 p.m. Michelle made a motion to join the meeting at 6:50, seconded by Helen, all in favor. Respectfully submitted by Helen Mercer.
We are so cool. Well, we are so cool.
Anything, Jen?
Um, at the bottom of director notes, um, the book group, yes, the book group will be meeting on September 9th. There's a "the" in the way there.
And I, I'm not sure if I think I... Jen, do you have a paper copy to write?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do that for today. Um, and then under the warrants, um, Denise's name is spelled wrong. So, I'll fix that. And the paragraph after it, Jen advised that Hoopla is, so you just have to add in an "is", in that sentence. And then that's, it just, a couple little grammatical things. Everything else sounded good?
Okay. So, someone wants to make a motion to accept?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as corrected. I'll second it.
Someone second it?
I did. Nita.
All in favor?
Aye.
And hello, Kate, Nita, I see you're not getting there. Okay.
But could I second?
So, let's go to the draft report. Let's look, see you, Jen.
Thank you. It's the first thing we have, that, um, the hours started on September 7th. Um, everything's been going well so far. Uh, Saturday, there were people lined up to come in, so maybe...
Wow.
A little validated, you know, coming in on Saturday morning and having people excited to be here.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was good. Um, the Board of Health has mandated that mask wearing, um, happens in all public buildings in town. As you can see, we're all masked up. Um, and, you know, last week went well. We are doing most of our programming outdoors still. We started knitting again, that happened outside. We did have book groups, which we were able to have in a conference room, and we just kept everyone distanced. And, um, we were able to open the windows and keep the airflow in, and, um, that went really well. So, you know, we'll kind of baby step back into the programming indoors and just kind of play it by ear. If they shut that down again, we'll just do what, what they want us to do. But for now, that's working out. We've added, um, Fridays to our outdoor playgroup, so now that will be happening on Wednesday and Fridays. And they will continue to be outdoors with the kids as long as they can, um, weather permitting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so our hotspots are live and they're ready to go. The one thing that we did have to do in order to circulate them, since it came from grant funding, we have to kind of follow the rules that they set. And one of their things they said is that we have to have an updated acceptable use policy, in our internet use policy. Um, so I did send that out to everyone, and I also gave everyone a print copy of it here at our meeting tonight. Um, I basically borrowed another library and I changed some elements of it that, you know, didn't have to do with our space and what we do here. And then I took a few elements from our old internet policy, which was very outdated, it needed to go. Um, and I came up with this really long-winded policy. But it, what I like about what I came up with is that it does have equal access, which is something that, you know, libraries are now really trying to focus on and just make it aware to people that that's, you know, we don't filter things. We don't, you know, everything is equal. We want people to have the access that they deserve. And on the backside of the page, there is that little acceptable use section that is mandated by the state in order for us to have these awesome little hotspots. Um, and it basically just says that users are expected to refrain from displaying graphics that are inappropriate for public viewing, playing audio that can disturb people, um, other users, and blatantly offensive visual or text-based materials, um, which have anything to do along with harassment, um, to other users and staff, obviously won't be tolerated, and that we reserve the right to ask users to halt any inappropriate use. Um, and it also, um, spells out that the library does not select the material that's available to them on these hotspots. Um, we're not comfortable...
That's a good point. You can't control that, you can't control that.
The information, the content.
Yeah.
Um, or even the quality of the information that they obtain through the internet. You know, without us here to help them find what they really need to find, they could need import a whole slew of information that they may not have wanted.
Fake news.
The hotspots do come filtered, and that is something that anyone over the age of 18 can ask that we take off when they borrow them. So, if they don't ask us to take it off, they remain filtered. If not, they...
What are they, filtered?
They filter basically anything that could be seen as harmful. I know one of the other libraries said, she's on her maternity leave, so she took one home to try it, and she was trying to search for pajamas.
Yeah, it won't let you look at anything, it's a little bit too much.
Really? Like telling a secret or things like that, so...
Like in school, like the kids in school.
Yeah, so it's tough, because it is really...
Aside from the research sometimes, because it won't...
Disabling. And I've heard from another few that they were looking up, um, something that was a nonprofit for LGBTQ rights, and it blocked that because it's a nonprofit. And for some reason, that violated the policy. Um, so it's, it's good for people to know that you may want to take it off just so that you can actually get access to everything you need to access. Um, but if they're going to let their children use it, then obviously it's going to be a filtered version. And that's pretty much everyone's choice. Um, does anyone have any questions about the policy?
I, I just would like to say that I think you did a really nice job putting this together. I've seen many of these policies in different jobs, so you did a really nice job. One question that I came up with as I was reading this is, what kind of virus protection program does the library have? Do they have?
We have just the ABG Free, which is provided to us, um, from CW Mars.
I didn't know if there was a townwide one that...
Yeah, not really.
Okay.
We do use, um, I'm gonna forget the name of it now, something called Deep Freeze Software, which is kind of like a safeguard on all of our public computers. If someone comes in, uses a computer, as soon as they log out, the Deep Freeze Software restores the computer back to its original state before they used it. So, anything they save, anywhere they went...
Other history is removed?
Everything gets removed.
Yeah, that's good.
It's kind of nice for us, and then if they try to download anything they're not supposed to, it wipes it completely off.
Yeah, that's good.
Everything is temporary on those computers, which is nice.
Great.
But there is a little something in there, too, that tells people about, like, obviously, bring your own, use your own cloud or use your own sting, because if you can't save stuff, it's gonna just immediately be erased, and we can't be held responsible for that.
Jen, is this stuff on our website?
It will be, if, once we approve it.
Okay.
And I did put on there that it was approved already, but that obviously can be changed.
There's just, there's one misspelling under the signing procedures.
So, I made a motion to approve.
No, you need to tell her.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, hold on.
There's just one misspelling, it says...
Yeah, we have a misspelling.
Granby's misspelled, it's Grafton, it says.
Where is it?
Under, um, sign, on the second page of signing procedures, it's the last paragraph.
Says Grafton, not Granby.
Oh, but as you can see, I borrowed from Grafton. That's too funny.
That's good.
Good catch. I will be fixing that. So, if I fix that, is everyone on board?
We said make a motion to approve it with acceptance.
I make a motion, we approve the, um, internet use policy as corrected. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you had one more thing sent out, Jen, the, um, bringing this in possibility?
Yes. Um, so let me just, hold on, let me do, uh, I'm gonna go in order here. Um, the financial report for state aid is almost completed. It's due on October 1st, and I will need a signature either from the trustee chair or the vice chair. Um, I'll probably have it done by the end of this week.
Okay, I'm, I'm going out of town Friday. So, I can either swing by Thursday, or Paula, I won't be back in until, I won't be back in town until Wednesday. So, if you, you're not ready by Thursday afternoon, then, um, maybe Paula can swing in on Friday. I don't know, we need to have it.
I can do that. Hopefully, I'll have it done before then, but if not, I will, uh, call Paula. I'm available Friday. Okay, um, and I also wanted to let everyone know that I did subscribe our new trustees to the NVLC mailing list, which is our, they're like email list, so Candace, Nita, I added both of you. Denise, I think?
Yeah, I think...
I added you as well.
Yeah, I got a note to...
You did, okay. So, just in case you see anything rolling through, it's not spam, that was me.
Mm-hmm.
And I did send along the information to the board to change the, change out the old trustees and add in our new trustees, because we haven't done that yet. The, also, the library's subscription to Hoopla has officially launched as of today, so I'm getting some promotional info together. It is just posted on our website, like, right before our meeting, I posted it. So, you guys can feel free to check it out and go on and download the app. Um, it gives you 10 free checkouts every month.
Wow, that's so cool.
And, um, everything is available right away. So, what's nice about it is you don't have to have these long waitlist times. Everything, you can just go on and check it out right away. And their borrow times are 21 days for books and audios, um, seven days for music, and three days for any TV or movies.
That's great.
So, yeah, it's really neat.
That's really good.
I'm excited, I can't wait to see the usage, who uses it.
Do you have the information that I'd be able to, like, write down in the minute about Hoopla?
Yes, I do. Actually, I'm gonna give you this, so you don't have to write down everything you say. Yeah, and it's on, the link is on our website, so you can just go ahead and click on that, and it will give you a link to either the Play Store or, you know, whatever device you have that you're using. Um, and...
Candace?
Oh, go ahead.
Is Hoopla, like, living?
Yes, it's like living, but it's more, it's like a paid, separate subscription. So, each library has to subscribe to it separately for their patrons to get on.
Does Lundy have games? Where, Hoopla? What does, like, Lundy have games? Like, I, I, I know you said something about, like, um, the Hoopla has, like, that you can go and download games, right?
Um, I'm not sure. I know they have movies, audios...
And probably more current things.
TV shows, and, yeah, and it's nice, because you don't have, like, the digital catalog has ridiculously long waitlists.
Oh, okay, so that...
So, this cuts that out, like, you can access it anytime. It's a per-use fee, so the library gets feed, like, say, a dollar ninety-nine every time someone downloads this audiobook. And the library pays that instead of, you know, being part of the free, um, ebook network where people, there's like a certain number of copies available that people check out and borrow, and it, one has to be returned before someone else can borrow it again. This is all the time offered. Um, and they have a ton of brand-new titles on there. Um, I was scoping it out earlier, I'm like, what do I want to read?
The book group will really like that.
Yeah, and that's what's really nice, is that our entire book group can get a digital copy of the book that they're reading, either audio or through, you know, regular book, um, through ebook or other, and, um, they don't have to pay for it, and they don't have to wait for it, which is really nice. And they even, it's H-O-O-P-L-A.
Can you download the music? No.
H-O-O-P-L-A.
I think so. I think what it does is it downloads to your device, and then after the certain amount of days, it becomes unavailable, like, you can't access it.
I'm staying, so it's not forever.
So, yeah, so it's, they kind of shut you down, but it's nice to be able to stream it, you know, when we can. So, just letting everyone know that goes live, and we'll see what the usage is and how much we can afford. Once we've spent up the first thousand dollars, it will then kind of like put all of our patrons on hold until we give them more money.
Right.
Or, you know, we can do a monthly invoice, which that could get kind of out of control.
Yeah.
So, we probably want to just give them another, like, thousand from our grant money and see how far that takes us, and, um, everyone's limited to 10 per month unless we run into more money, and then we can help it.
That's a good idea, awesome, that's good.
Yeah. And you have to have our library's prefix number on your barcode, so if you don't have a Granby library card, you'll have to switch your card out for a different one here with us. Um, or we can, I'm sorry, I'm kicking you. Or we can, you know, kind of like work around that, too. If you want to keep your card as your online account, we can give you a different card for just that, but we can talk about that later. Does anyone have any questions about that? My last thing, I promise. Um, the trustee friends account, just wanted to give everyone an update. Our New York Life Securities account has gained, um, seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents from the previous month. Um, the account has gained one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-six cents since we opened it in March.
Gee, that's good.
And the, um, Alice Stewart Garden account received a deposit from the GoFundMe, which is five hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents, which brings that account to one thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Yeah. He's good at what he does. He's my, he's my financial guy.
Yeah, right?
He's mine, yeah.
So, I can pass this around if anyone wants to look at it. Um, but I kind of just did a little, quick little recap of that. Okay. And then the lesson that the trustees need to do is go over the trustee duties. And there's a couple copies that I made up on. Did everyone get this in their email? Did everyone get this in their email?
Hmm.
Yes. Okay, I have one extra, I don't know. Uh, can I? Yeah. Thank you. No problem. I don't know if you want someone to read it aloud, and then someone can make suggestions, or how you want to handle it.
I'll say.
Jen, you didn't, you didn't change anything, this is what we had since 2018.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Does everybody want to take a minute and go through it, or do you want people to read it?
My God, you can find it now.
Let's skim.
All right, let's skim it.
Where did it come?
Did you read?
Thanks, Jen.
Probably read it.
Jen, it, it says, "At the first monthly meeting following town election", should it, should it say when that is somewhere in there?
Um, okay, I think we grappled with this the last time we did it. We weren't sure when, because sometimes that changes, but it's typically...
Isn't it May typically?
Yeah, it's typically in May.
What's our password?
I think we worked it that way.
Public Wi-Fi.
Public Wi-Fi is the password?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we kind of kept it a little vague.
And because our meetings were the second of every month, we couldn't hit the nominating city to July, and then they couldn't nominate to August, so we decided not to put a month in there in case something happens like that again. It's just the first month after the town election, in case that ever changed.
It's very confusing.
Yep.
These are the good two meetings.
That makes sense, that does make sense, I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, of course, good question.
So what are the state-level functions? To represent the Granby Free Public Library by attending yearly state-level functions?
So there are some...
There's some galas or something cool?
That would be fun.
Not flak tie or anything.
Oh, come on.
They haven't happened since, you know, prior to COVID, but there are typically, like, trustee orientations, and then there are other, like, legislative breakfasts that they like to see, you know, the trustee from each municipality going to, so that there's representation.
Okay.
Um, but it's not like a requirement.
So you mentioned trustee orientation, I haven't done anything like that.
On the weekend, like, when they have a big, big one, and we have, like, on a Saturday morning, people that absolutely have jobs, they're gonna be on next station.
I can't see it.
I can't, I'm laughing.
It's off the edge. Maybe I'll do it like this.
I should make mine too. That's a good idea. Site or whatever it is.
Ah, good idea.
Janice, have you gotten anything recently about trustee orientations?
Oh, let me look, I think I have a few more to do today, so let me, um, let me just peek over into that.
Okay. They're really good to go to, because you kind of get a feel for, you know, what's expected, what's changed, what's, you know, new, and then with the Zoom, it's really...
Just turn it, just turn your phone. It won't go.
Because we're in all different parts of the state.
Okay.
So that's kind of cool, it helps you kind of wrap your mind around the job.
I'll look that one.
I don't know, it won't go.
The one I've got today was, um, and see, they're doing a lot more webinars, which is National Empowerment for Your Community, um, additional online earning, uh, web junction courses and catalogs. Um, this one doesn't have anything on free, Amazon, for them. Um, let me look and see if, um, I see any for the, um, new trustees.
Wait, it went, did you say that?
I thought it was, I said something else, but, um, let me look at that.
Yeah, I might want to go out to Candace, so we can forward them along.
Um, I, I get two or three a day from them.
I do too, I get a lot of them, like, there's always something going on.
Yeah, they must say.
I need email.
You have to kind of sift through what's really important and what isn't, um, which takes a while before you can figure it out.
Something really interesting, and, you know, it'll... Oh, this is the fire truck, so I might throw you on mute.
As long as it's not going to my house.
Open chat.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, uh, definitely, Kupanaya, I'll take a look tomorrow, see what, see if I can send you something.
Perfect.
Um...
I did have a shadow fire the other day.
I always, I can always send a quick email out to asking if there was any new, but just going back to the last two or three days, I've opened seven emails, and I don't see any, um, for you, but I'll, I will find them. They're, they're in all my emails, I'm sure.
Okay.
And then forward it off to you guys. Um, there needs a vice chair, Paula, you need, need to add something in here that, um, because you, you kind of take it over the world of giving the, um, the monthly, um, posting, and make, keep that as a chairperson, so who takes your spot can keep it up.
I, I think that would be a good idea.
Taking over the what?
Um, posting, um, going to the library and posting the meeting. Um, a couple, like, I usually go on a Thursday or Friday morning before the meeting, yeah. Because I, I guess it has to be in by Friday at noon time, I think she said?
Like, forty-eight hours.
It has to be thirty, six working hours before the meeting. So if we miss the Friday noon time deadline, we cannot have a Tuesday meeting.
So, and, and, and if there's a holiday, it has to be posted on Thursday, Monday holiday?
Yes, it, yes, it has to be working hour.
It does talk about it in the meeting section, right below the duties of the secretary. It states that all meetings are to be posted in accordance with the open meeting law at least forty-eight hours before the meeting day. Um, so I don't know if that kind of like, I don't know if that keeps it open as to any of the trustees could do it, or do we want to make it a specific duty?
It doesn't always say, it doesn't really appoint anybody.
Yeah.
It does, it doesn't say anybody can do it.
Yeah.
Um, I said that Paula, that's, you know, it's the chief, um, you know, vice chair, she kind of taken it over, so I don't really... Jen sends it both of us, and then either, you know, Paula will say, hey, can you, can you do it? So it, it kind of goes between the two of us. And then the one time I tried to do it electronically, because they told me, just tell me what you want, and I pitched everything over, and she went, perfect, I've got everything, you're all set. I forgot, I forgot to tell them that to tell them the library.
Well, I think by putting one person on it, you know, like, you're not worrying about who's going to be doing it each month or something, so I, I feel that, yeah.
Okay.
It could be up to the vice chair. Unless somebody else wants to volunteer.
Oh, no. That's all right.
Looking for a secretary, and that's the next thing down here. Now, we actually came up with secretaries, and we do not have a secretary right now. So we are looking for a secretary, so, so, I mean, some volunteers, secretary's here.
Well, Lynn, um, Jen and I, we were discussing that, and we had come up with an idea of maybe having two secretaries, so it's not on one person, you know, and they could, the two of them. No one wants to do that anymore. Do it, could figure out, like, you know, every other month or something like that, because it would just make it easier on whoever... Secretary of the Month.
We actually tried to like there, that everyone took a turn every month, so everyone had, during the course of year, you know, there's nine of us, you know, each, well... Each one of us had to take notes.
Yep.
We tried that, thanks for...
Oh, didn't work?
Didn't work. So you don't want to take notes. There is a form, and Leah had a really good one out there, and I'm sure Kate probably has a template on her P S A of working fill-in, anybody who's, I think, who's been a secretary has some type of a template that could give other people, you know, so you just fill in what we need, you know, to be done.
I don't mind doing it, it's just sometimes I can't make the meetings because of school. So it would be good to share that responsibility with somebody else. That's how, yeah, that's what we were talking about, if, um, there were, like, two people, so... I don't mind doing it, it's just sometimes things come up and I, I can't. Like, last month, it was like a death in the family, and I wasn't even like...
Right, which, you know, I think that would be sufficient.
Yeah.
I don't know, we technically need one person to take the quote-unquote role of being the secretary, and then we can have a backup or...
We can, we can have no secretary.
Well, well, there are, are there any other duties besides the notekeeping? There's...
Taking care of correspondence.
Taking care of correspondence.
So if we have, you know...
A vice secretary could do that.
Right, so we have to send the thing.
How many helpers you want there, girl? Administrative assistant to the secretary.
Yeah.
And it was, I don't think the secretary's done anything but take notes.
Right.
And, and send other people, um, you know...
I, I think there was, like, a sympathy card or something that was sent out or in the past.
And, and I know the person in the past has always done that, um, and I, I'm guilty of that. I know I've given Jen tons of cards. And, you know, so I think some of the cards have me sending out, Jen, because, you know...
I thought it was like all these things.
Because sometimes Jen hears about it before any of us hear about it. And I'm gonna be guilty, if I'm, you know, I'm having a couple, couple copies, I may not see my email. And, you know, it, it happens. So I know, Jen, do you still want to, you know, kind of keep sending out the cards? I know you have in the past, but...
You know what, I'll do it, I'll do it.
You'll do it?
I'll do it.
You'll do the shared responsibility?
I can do it, I'll do it myself.
I love you. Michelle, I love you. Very much. Michelle gets the crown, she's a star.
No, I'm not gonna do this, you could do this one, I'll start this one, okay?
That's fine. I was gonna be like... Someone bring Michelle a cake.
The no-bake cheesecake, cupcakes, you know, thing.
Yeah, we just throw it in here.
Doesn't look like it's an ingredient either.
I would, I'm surprised you sent, um, I'll send an email to the town hall.
I'm gonna take a picture of that.
Because I hope it asks me, who's secretary, who's secretary? I think I was kind of staying on it, because they couldn't, they didn't want me to blank, but I will, um, send an email out and let them know. Um, that, it was Michelle, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle was one L or two?
One, one L.
Same with my friend, and that's very unusual.
It is unusual, yeah.
My, um, best friend's daughter. My best friend's daughter, same.
One L.
One L. Did I do that one already?
So getting back to our duties.
That's what I'm looking at, I wish one I did.
Jen, who posts to the library's website? I, have any of the secretaries ever posted to the library website?
Well, we used to on our old website, but our new website doesn't have that capability. So they get sent to the town clerk, or they're supposed to get sent to the town clerk.
I have to leave in three minutes.
Okay, so my suggestion for the duties of the secretary number three is to have it say forwards approved minutes to the library director, director for posting, and then just period. So that kind of covers us, you know, in the future, if we're posting it to the town's website or we're posting it to wherever we're posting it, it kind of, like, we're not getting specific.
Yep. So what is it, forward approved minutes to what?
For posting period, so you get rid of the, um, library's website, that's my suggestion.
After we approve the minutes, then it gets posted?
Yeah, they always get sent back to me, the original, I mean, not the original, but the corrected copy gets sent back to me, and I keep them all in a file, so that even if someone comes here and wants to look through the file, they can access it here, and it's all corrected and typo-free. Do we have to vote for Michelle to be secretary?
Yeah, so someone needs to nominate her.
I nominate Michelle Petras for, uh, library trustee secretary right this minute.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't think Paula's ever gonna do it again, because we're, like, running her, her ringer. She's like, I don't know, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're doing this. We learn how to juggle on the trustee board.
But Jen gives you that, Jen gives you this nice thing of everything that she's done, typed up, so you have, like, all her notes. So you don't have to, like, invent the wheel. Unless it gets exciting like this, and then there's more.
Just say lots of excitement.
But I give this, I can give this to you electronically too, so you can just copy and paste and just change the wording up to make it the tenses proper, you know, that good jazz.
Okay, next meeting.
We just need to vote on our duties, does anyone want to change anything else on the trustee duties? I think leaving them as vague as possible is the best way, because we start getting really specific, and then we just have to keep changing it everywhere.
Right, right, every time we do anything a little different.
Yeah.
So, does someone make a motion to accept the, um, the duties with amendments?
Yes.
Then Jen, you can make the amendments and send it out to us?
Yes, and I'll put it in our binder, we have a binder with it in there too, so I will do that.
I make a motion to, uh, accept the Internet use policy with amendments, is that what I'm doing? Oh, no.
Trustee duties.
Trustee, sorry, wrong one.
Trustee duties.
I make a motion to accept the trustee duties with amendments. As, with amendments, right? That's good?
Yep.
Short and sweet?
Short and sweet.
I second. Duties are responsibilities.
Duties are responsibilities. That flies so annoying.
Did someone second it?
Yes.
Candace.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, let's see.
I do have two warrants. Want me to read the warrants, and we can have Paula sign them? That works? Okay, so we have two. Um, the first one is six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents, and that's Baker &amp; Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, and Case. And the second is for three thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents, and that is for Otelco, Baker &amp; Taylor, Blackstone Publishing, and Ingram Entertainment.
Someone want to make a motion to accept the warrant and have Paula sign them?
I can't make another motion.
I make the motion to accept the warrants as read.
I'll second it.
Candace is...
All in?
Aye.
Okay, I am...
How many motions are we gonna make?
Hey, Jen, um, I'm curious. Did you hear anything back from the, um, select people about final elimination?
Not yet. I did just compose the letter, I sent it to, this up here? Uh, yes, please, and the date is there. Um, I sent it to Janice and Paula to both look over and approve it before I sent it, so it's been a little bit of a process with everything happening, so...
Sure.
As soon as we get that straightened out, I'll let everyone know when we're official.
Or what are you doing now? You know, kind of, are you still collecting fines, or are you...
Um, right now, we're still in, um...
The COVID?
The COVID mode, so basically everyone's fines are being waived anyway. Um, we haven't really heard anything from the state as to whether or not to start that again or take it off yet, we're kind of still just status quo. And we have seen, you know, people really returning a lot of their materials knowing that they're not gonna get slapped with all these fines.
Accept the warrants.
Because people are still reeling stuff back because they took that last warrant, last...
I'm not that bad. I am bad, I'm, I'm gonna admit that I'm bad, but I'm not that bad. I have to, I have to run, because I gotta be in South Elliot Seven.
Um, I have one thing for others.
Okay.
And I do too, my pool is still open and it's heated.
Sometimes I have, sometimes I have. Sometimes I have, sometimes I want to do getting in because, you know, I take care of my mom. And I asked Jen to set up a Zoom meeting so we can do that. But we're also going back to, um, a lot of the cold red worrying of full now. So do, do we want to go back to having certain Zoom meetings or accommodations of a Zoom meeting? And whoever wants to go in, um, because technically we're supposed to be six feet apart, I believe. Dylan and Luke, at me sitting around the table, we're not six feet apart. So, um, how do you want to do that? Want to go back?
Is the health department saying that we still have to be six feet apart?
Yeah, that is part of it, the social distancing.
How about if we use the, that or the community room?
We could, um, starting in October, our community room will be open again, so we would be able to space further apart. So that's up to you guys. We can do a hybrid where we are doing it this way. And if whoever can't make it can be on Zoom or the.
I love the in-person meeting.
Love me too.
Me too.
Spend too long.
Because if you're in a room, they can hook Zoom meetings up to the TV. So if someone's out of town, but yet they want, you know, they want to, you know, hook into a Zoom meeting, they can. You know, if I'm having an issue, you know, with someone, you know, here to take care of my mom, I can leave Zoom in and not miss a meeting. Um.
Yeah, we could do a vote. If anybody requests it.
Could do a combination of both. I mean, we can do that, but I wanted to know how you guys go.
I think doing a, a hybrid would work because it would appease those who want to be in person and those who can't make it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it works better for webcam as well, if they can get.
I was going to say, I'm kind of glad you, if you went to hybrid because I really would have had to say that I'm going to have to come off the board because I can't make my meetings. So that's where it's something else to, um, you know, I want to do everything I can, but I also have a commitment to my mom. So as soon as Zoom meetings, I can do that.
That sounds like a good plan.
Okay, you have a business.
Yeah, Jen, did Leah say anything to you about the book sale?
Yes.
Okay, because she mentioned it to me and said, since we were having a meeting, that people could maybe sign up for the book sale.
Yes, I do have it. We're, uh, doing our book sale the last week of September. And, um, she has this little schedule that if anybody can volunteer to work it for any amount of time, the empty spaces are what's available last week of September.
Oh, I thought it was next week, she said.
It is next week.
Yeah, next week.
Oh, okay.
Starting the eighteenth.
It's almost the.
Saturday, September eighteenth.
Right, that's the Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah, so next.
It's next week.
So not quite the last week, it's next week.
Yeah, can I remember? She said next week.
It starts on Saturday.
Oh, which Saturday? This Saturday?
Blew right by.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll volunteer, so.
This Saturday. What am I doing?
Jen, I don't, are you going to take your food?
I'm going to take a picture of this.
I've got a ton of food magazines going back four years, you know, the food.
Yeah, we can take those.
Okay, I have a full pot. I will drop those off to you then.
Sure, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
How about construction paper? Tons of colored construction paper.
Janice will probably take that.
Okay, great.
Are you all being needed?
Already dead.
Oh, you did?
Just, we just have tons of stuff from people that live there and just stuff.
Wow. Congrats.
I don't know if you want to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll send that around the room and I think that's it for our meeting.
Okay, so next meeting is October twelfth and meeting is adjourned at six fifty-eight.
We have to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So do we need two people to volunteer? Like I was going to volunteer for next Saturday.
Jen, I will swing by on Thursday or sometimes Thursday and drop those.
You just want one person?
Yeah, I think just one person.
So is it, is one person reach these actions? Is that what I'm looking for?
Someone does.
I'm a little confused.
Um, I will make a, um.
Oh, I wrote that down. I was going to volunteer, but I'm like, am I not supposed to be there?
I'll, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
I don't know.
All in favor?
Gaze down here until.